Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the reorganization meeting for the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. My name is Sean Boyce. I'm the Business Administrator Board Secretary for the district, but right now I'm the chairman pro tem as the board needs to organize. So there's a few pieces to that. One is that we go through the election results, administer the oath of office to reelected board members, and they take their seat. And then the board will elect a president and a vice president, and at that point, the board is reconstituted for the next year or until the next reorganization meeting. So the election held on November 1. Let me begin by reading the results of that. English Town Borough Representative Diana Capiello received 9,695 votes. There were also 258 write-ins. Howell Township Representative Mark Perici received 11,997 votes. There were also 180 write-ins. And in Farmingdale Borough, Kathy Lavin received 10,336 votes, and there was also 101 write-ins. So our three reelected candidates, we welcome back to the board. So the next step here in the process is for you to take your oath of office and then take your seat at the table. So if you raise your right hand and recite the oath, then you'll be official. So Ms. Capiello, you're up first.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Diana Capiello, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in the NJSA 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Mrs. Lavin, you're up next.
I, Kathy Lavin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Kathy Lavin, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law by the office of the member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA. And, what did it say? 18A12? And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I, Mark Perici, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Mark Perici, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
So congratulations to all three returning board members. As we move on to the next item of business, which will be the election of a president, but before I do that, let me take roll call for the first time with this board. Mr. Bruno. Mrs. Bruno. Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Higley.
Here.
Mrs. Lavin. Mr. Messinger. Mrs. Finelli. Mr. Perici.
Here.
Very good. Okay, so election of the president of the board for the next year. I will open the floor for nominations. Any member of the board can make a nomination. No second is necessary. And when it becomes apparent that there are no further nominations, I will ask for a motion to close the nominations. And if there's only one nomination, that motion will also include to instruct the board secretary to cast a unanimous vote for that member for the position of president of the Board of Education. So right now, I'd like to open nominations for president.
I'd like to nominate Peter Bruno.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley. Okay, seeing no further nominations, may I have a motion to close nominations and to cast a unanimous vote for Mr. Bruno for the office of president of the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education? Move, Mrs. Capiello. A second. Mrs. Lavin. Thank you. Mr. Bruno. Mrs. Capiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Very good. Congratulations to Mr. Bruno.
(applause). For the nomination of vice president, everyone, everybody, as you know, it's crazy the last two years personally, and I just want to wish you all a happy new year, and again, thank you for your support. Now, the four nominations of vice president of Freehold Regional High School District, that this person will serve in need for the next reorganization meeting. I have a nomination. Does anybody have a nomination? I want to nominate Mark O'Grady, Michael Messenger, as vice president. Can I have a motion to close the nomination?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Capiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Congratulations.
May I have a motion to go into the second session?
Move. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
The board will return to conduct business at 8:00.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act 231, public laws of 1975, this meeting's notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on August 29, 2022, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press September 1, 2022. All municipal clerks of the townships and the boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting has been met on April 29, 2022. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Descano, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. President. There was no additional items.
May I have a, this is a reorganization item. May I have a motion to approve C-1 through C-6? This is a reorganization item. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Mrs. Higley, Mrs. Capiello.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Capiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 8, 2022 regular board meeting?
Second.
Mrs. Capiello.
Mrs. Higley.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes. All communications are on file in the board secretary's office. Dr. Sampson, we're ready for your report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome back. We're dealing with, what is it, 60 degrees today and 8 degrees last week, so always interesting. Just a couple of brief updates as we move into the new year. The district work around developing our new strategic plan continues. We have a large group meeting scheduled for February 23. Well, we'll bring back the whole sort of planning teams. The smaller subcommittees are all meeting over the next couple of weeks prior to that meeting to start refining some of our work, and we're on track to complete that work by March to share with the Board of Education at that point in time. And of course, the board members are all active participants in those various committees. So I'm very pleased with where that work is headed and thankful for the folks that are leading teams because it's a lot of extra work. But having been through now, you know, this is our third iteration of a long-term plan. You know, we've certainly fine-tuned our processes that makes it a little bit easier to move forward off of, build off of a lot of the good work that's happening in the district and be able to integrate some new work as well. All of that, of course, you know, in the face of, you know, certainly a more difficult financial situation than we were in during the development of the first plan. And I'll get to that momentarily. Just for the board's purpose, you know, there will be a change to the calendar in the February meeting. March 13, 14, 15, and 16 will ultimately be partial day, early dismissal days due to the, yeah, the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment, which will eat up and cannibalize most of that week in addition to some of the other testing that eats away and cannibalizes a great deal of our instructional time. I'm also pleased to announce that Dr. Mary Jane Garibay and myself have been tapped to chair NJSA's Safety and Security Committee, statewide committee, exploring ways that school districts and school leaders, in particular superintendents, can most effectively serve their constituents in a time of increasing actions of school violence and what that all entails. So it's been, it's a nice honor for Monmouth County and for the regional area in particular that the two of us are doing that together. Might have seen some press releases that stabilization aid, that's the aid that was put aside in the budget, in this year's budget from the state to assist districts like the Freehold Regional High School District, which have been negatively impacted by the passage of Senate Bill 2, S-2. And if you recall from previous meetings, last year, there was a $50 million pot of that money allotted across the state. The Freehold Regional High School District applied for and was awarded 1.8 million at that point in time. This year, there was a $30 million pot, so that pot was reduced by $20 million, even though there's currently an $11 billion surplus in the state. They reduced that pot by $20 million post-COVID. I'll leave that for what it is. And a whole host of additional districts applied for it this year, so it was, there was a lot more applicants this year. And so we are proud that the Freehold Regional High School District was one of, I believe, 32 or so districts that did receive some funds. The funds we received were approximately $800,000, so a reduction from what we received the last year. It certainly, while we are very appreciative and thankful, it ultimately does not even come close to close the, what currently is somewhere around a $10 million gap for us over the next two years. And I've said it, and I said it during the December meeting, you know, that COVID, from a financial perspective, averted a lot of difficulties for this district because we received federal funds and we saved some money, right? So from a purely financial standpoint, COVID masked our financial situation for a brief period of time. That is not the case this year. We have implored our state legislators to advocate to keep districts whole at this point in time for at least this budget. And so for somewhere just south of $300 million, the entire state, every public school district in the state can be held whole this year post-pandemic. And that's in the wake of an $11 billion surplus currently. So I do believe New Jersey, I'm not sure if New Jersey's the only one, but we're certainly in the distinct minority of being states who are cutting money to districts as they attempt to grapple with where we're emerging from post-pandemic. And we've certainly seen, you know, the needs certainly have increased of some of our students. The difficulty is there. It's the Freehold Regional High School District. Our class sizes have crept up significantly in the past decade, you know. So when, I've been fortunate enough to be here for 12 years. When I was first here, when we developed the master schedule and you sort of drew the, you drew the line at 26 or so when you started, then it went to 28, and now it's at 30. And we certainly have a number of classes that are over 30 at this point in time. It puts an incredible burden on the organization, incredible burden on the teachers teaching those students. It's a difficult process. We've made the case to our legislators once again to take a look at the adequacy budgets of districts, the adequacy number. We are $14 million under that number. I'm going to continue to say this at every single board meeting. So the state makes a determination based on the students in your district of what it should cost you to educate them. The Freehold Regional High School District is $14 million under that number. When we institute a 2% tax levy, we can generate somewhere around $2.8 million. I am no mathematician, but I know that 2.8 million is not 14 million, and that it doesn't even come close to closing a $14 million adequacy gap. Every time that we've met with our legislators recently, and there's been a lot of those meetings over the past month or so, we've made that, we've made that case very clear. And for those folks who say the school funding formula was designed to make sure that money flows in a way that's equitable, the school funding formula was only fully run the first year it was implemented. And that's somewhere around 15 years ago, Mr. Boyce.
2008.
Again, not a mathematician, but.
Quite a while ago, right?
So all of this, you know, leads to some potentially difficult decisions for this board in the coming months. I still hold out hope that the governor, Governor Murphy, and the legislators will look and see that this is not the time to cut aid to any school districts in the quote-unquote "number one" public school state in America, right? And that something changes in that budget that gives particularly some of the S-2 districts like ourselves some relief and averts some of the more difficult decisions that we may, we may have to make. And we'll see what the next couple of months bring. You know, certainly with, with school budgeting, you know, we certainly plan for the worst-case scenario, and then we're prepared for anything that is better than the worst-case scenario, right? And so it's our responsibility to plan for the worst-case scenario. And, you know, right now, as it stands today, over the next two budget cycles, there's close to a $10 million or thereabouts hole for this district. It's $10 million in reductions. So.
When's that budget hearing? I think I'm going to be seeing Mr. Moses in Florida that week.
A lot, a lot to be decided yet. And there are, you know, there's a real opportunity here for the governor and our state legislators to make, you know, make a bold pronouncement about how they, how they view public schools, right? And how they'll, how they'll support them or not. You know, I can't, I can't stress enough, we're through S-2 at this point. It's been years. But that piece of legislation put this district in particular on a disastrous path. And I keep reiterating these simple numbers. Our per pupil costs are about $3,600 less than the average district, high school district. Our administrative costs are 31% lower than similar districts. We are efficient at every metric imaginable. Mr. Boyce and I have our mid-year budget review with the county office next week. In preparation for that meeting, we have to prepare a document that talks about where we're funneling our, where we're putting our funds, how we're managing this. And when you look at the state numbers versus where the Freehold Regional High School District is, and every single, literally every single budgetary metric that we must report on, we are significantly below the average.
So if I, if I can just add a comment or two to that, you know, the adequacy budget's a really important term, and that's the state's calculation on a district-by-district basis of what it should cost to provide a thorough and efficient education. And the funding formula, as it stands in prior to S-2, the funding formula accomplishes that through a combination of local efforts of property taxes and state aid. So the last budgets submitted were $11 million below adequacy, and we have another $3 million or so to go in state aid cuts under S-2. So you can see where our trajectory is going. The problem with it is that there's a supplemental law unrelated to the funding formula that capped property taxes at 2% increase year over year. So as the state calculates our adequacy budget and the community's ability to pay, the numbers that they say should be raised in taxes is $20 million more than is being raised in taxes, and that can be raised in taxes because there's a cap on the levy. And that, that is the genesis of us being so far below adequacy. But simply being below adequacy by definition means that you do not have, we do not have an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. And that alone should be.
That's because of the cap.
A game changer. Right. Well, that's because of the cap, and that is our current position, and that's why S-2 has had such a significant impact on Freehold Regional in particular.
So it's just not as simple as saying, "Our homes are worth enough that we can afford." That's not really what you're saying.
Well, that's, that's how they go about determining how much state aid.
Right. That's the argument that the state is making to some degree, Mr. Bruno. The difficulty is, if you look at our property value and the increase over time, and the state's determination of what our local fair share should be in relation to that property value, they do not jive. The property values have not grown to the, to the degree that the state says we should pay. Mr. Boyce and I, in testimony to the Senate Ed, the Assembly Ed, and all of our local legislators, have pointed that out repeatedly and actually shared those, those graphs with them of what that, what that looks like. That's at the heart of our lawsuit against the state about the capricious nature of some of the elements within how the funding formulas plays out, right? That, that's, that's the, that's the difficulty. So it's, so you're listening to me, right? It's a complex process, and it's hard, it's, so simplicity is the ultimate sophistication, right? So to boil that down in the most simple manner possible is what we try to do when making our arguments about why this is having a disproportionate impact on the Freehold Regional High School District. And it is, frankly.
Can I add something? You talk about simplifying it. I think our governor simplified it the best at one of his prior budget hearings when he said state aid is property tax relief. And that's how he put it. So I would just like to reiterate that if our state legislators are willing to fully fund our education, then that will result in property tax relief.
We're hoping they're going to have a change of heart in the next few weeks. Let's see. Yep. I get back again that how lucky we are that we passed the referendum. That's all I can say. Thank you, Pete. Thank you, everybody, because it's really amazing that we passed the referendum. Let me thank the taxpayers and the community for that. I don't think we have any board reports tonight. There's no, well, Mr. Boyce, are there any changes?
There are. There is. There's one. On item H3, which is approval of appointments for Edna Black, the language reads "prorated per diem," and it should read "prorated per annum." So that being the only change.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
And since we don't have a board report tonight, can I read a proclamation regarding January being School Board Recognition Month?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. So our governor, in December, passed an executive proclamation declaring January 2023 as School Board of Recognition Month. I would like to read it for everybody. Whereas New Jersey's public schools serve nearly 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas approximately 5,000 local Board of Education members and charter school trustees devote countless hours without remuneration to the oversight of school district operations, including finances, policy, curriculum, and staffing, and whereas, as the policymaking bodies for local school districts, New Jersey's local Boards of Education endeavor to meet the challenges facing public schools and to help students attain the education necessary to excel in college and in the workplace and to enable them to compete in a global economy. And whereas local Boards of Education have contributed to New Jersey being among the leading states in measures of academic quality such as national assessment of educational progress scores and the preparation for college through advancement, advanced placement courses and other curricular offerings, and whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month, and whereas by making meaningful contributions to public education, the dedicated members of local school boards have greatly enhanced the quality of life in our state. Now therefore, I, Philip D. Murphy, Governor of the State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month. And I would just like to thank all of my fellow board members and all of the board members from the K districts in which we also come from. I just want to thank you for your service to our community.
Okay. So we're going to move along with the agenda. We're going to take each personnel. Sorry. There is no public participation tonight.
There is no public participation tonight. Are you happy to say?
Well, there's nobody signed up.
No one's signed up.
Right.
Would anybody like to participate? Anybody? Anybody? H, personnel and negotiations. Can I have a motion to approve H-1 through H-14?
Second.
Mrs. Capiello, Mrs. Higley?
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except that St. Louis H-6 as opposed to Lisa Sasso and Dennis Tilopoff.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
We're going to take program operations, building, transportation, and our fiscal plan. Can I have a motion to approve I-1 through J-3?
Second.
Mrs. Higley, Mrs. Capiello?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Educator program and administration. Can I have a motion to approve A-1 through L-1?
Move. Second.
Mrs. Capiello, Mrs. Higley?
Any discussion, Board members? No discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Does any of the Board members have bold business? I have a new business. I want to congratulate Mr. Parisi, Mrs. Capiello, and Mrs. Lavin. They were sworn in tonight on winning their election as a member. They're back on board with us, as you can see. We have a new Vice President, Mr. Messinger from Marko High School, who served this year to begin a term to our next reorganization meeting. So I want to thank them. And any new business?
I'd like to congratulate Brian Gollum. He's the Boyd Basketball Coach for the Freehold Township. On December 17, he had his 400th victory, which is a big milestone of Boyd Basketball. So I didn't think it was going to be a surprise.
Yeah, because we have a resolution. We should now read the resolution. You can do it, Tom. I'll read the resolution.
So tonight, we interviewed, to replace Mr. Moses. We interviewed Amanda. We're going to have a resolution on her appointment. She'll take her seat in February. Congratulations, welcome aboard. She is a Freehold person. She went to Freehold Borough High School. And she's also an educator. And Mr. Boyce is going to read the resolution.
So this will fall in under N-2. Be it resolved to appoint Amanda McCob, a borough of Freehold resident, to the vacant Board of Education seat created by the prior resignation of Mr. Moses. N-2.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
We need a motion. We need to motion it.